...for Turo, 15 seconds. All set and then?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Steve Solag and this is the Turo Planning Board. And that's another else. This is Thursday, September 6th and it's 10:05 a.m. We are at Turo Town Hall. And the Board will introduce themselves, starting on my far left. Chairman Reaver.
Bruce Boebin.
Steve Solag.
Karen House.
Paul Kearden.
Peter Barrett.
Okay. The beginning of the meeting is reserved for anyone who wishes to bring up possible agenda items. That we wish to keep the speaking down to four or five minutes. Do you have something?
I do.
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Kalm and I live at 10 Market Drive. I'm also the President of the Two Hager Association, a group of 40 now 45 residential homes. And their components are for rural community. Some of you may recognize me from my numerous appearances a couple of years ago in the matter regarding Mr. Mike Trabuna's unauthorized removing of over 100 trees and filling of the property on an unpermitted basis. This is a mixed-use property at the time that was grandfathered into the otherwise residential community. And as you may remember, for those who were members of the Board, just a quick reminder of the process. A cease, desist, and remediate order was issued after about four months of unpermitted activities. The Planning Board met with Mr. Trabuna over, I think, five or six different meetings during which it was the Planning Board's position that remediation should take place. In the middle of that process, under some prompting from the Building Commissioner, Mr. Trabuna changed the use of his property. And by removing two of the cottages on his property, was able to continue with the fill, filling processes and topological changes that have resulted in a 14-foot hill that is now threatening our road. Because of the change of use, he was able to ignore the cease, desist, and remediate order. And at the time, the Planning Board assured our community that we're looking to this loophole in the zoning bylaws. That, you know, once a cease, desist, and remediate order is put in place, that should be addressed before any change of use was able to vacate that order. So I would ask that that be put on the future agenda. As a result of that loophole in the zoning bylaws, our community has suffered three years of unlimited dumping by a number of contractors. We know that the property owner has openly invited contractors in Turo just to dump their fill there. And this brings up the other issue that I hope the Board will take, put onto its agenda. Because as you'll see from these pictures, everything from asbestos to clothing to asphalt and tar have been dumped by various contractors. We have been very disappointed despite numerous complaints from members of our community that no zoning laws exist that control the quality of fill that can be dumped. This especially concerns us because of, you know, like everybody else in Turo, we're on well water. And while the Health Agent has offered to test the groundwater, as most of you would imagine, groundwater will not be impacted by all of the construction debris that has been dumped there. And we do believe that some of the fill from domes may have, which is already shown to be contaminated, may have been relocated there. But groundwater would not show evidence of contamination for a number of years, but it percolates through. So I would ask that the Planning Board not only take care of the loophole that it had previously identified, but also begin to look at regulation on placement of unclean fill and to create some parameters or at least reporting functions for where that fill is coming from in residential communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, Jack?
Do you want to vote to approve this open meeting? Yeah, zoning problems are part of what we have to deal with. And I agree that we intend trying to solve some of that problem. So I'm in agreement that loopholes that our zoning bylaws allow for a certain, I call it misbehavior for now, would be wise to look at. If the Board wants to, through consensus, if we could put that on a
Oh, definitely.
Agenda item, so I believe that would be consensus. Thank you. I have to identify this fact that generally the Planning Board makes the statement that this meeting is being recorded. And at this point, other people are recording this meeting. And I'd just like to have them identify themselves to recording. And I believe that's
Tim McCarthy.
Tim McCarthy recording. Is anyone else recording this? Okay. So if you are, just please make us aware of that fact. Okay. That brings us to our agenda item. I think I want to ask Peter to read it.
Oh, okay. Our agenda item, continued deliberation by Planning Board draft marijuana bylaw. The Planning Board will continue to deliberate on the proposed amendments to the town of Turo zoning bylaw for purposes of regulating medical and adult use recreational marijuana establishments within the town, including establishments for the cultivation, processing, testing, product manufacturing, retail sales, and transportation of marijuana, which usage shall be limited to certain zoning districts and subject to the issuance of a special permit and site plan approval. The Planning Board will then vote to recommend the draft marijuana bylaw to the Board of Selectmen for the Turo Fall Town Meeting. The complete text of the proposed amendments are on file with the Turo Town Clerk, Turo Town Hall, 24 Town Hall Road, and are available for viewing during normal business hours, 8 a.m. to 4 p.m., Monday through Friday, and at the Turo website.
So this is the deliberation process that the Board is taking to try to complete our draft bylaw for marijuana in Turo. And it's it's got its own set of problems. And so, let's see, I'm going to ask Karen to try to help us figure out where we were when we left on. The time of the trip. Travel. Let's see. Or is the Board comfortable with taking yourself where we left on? Because I have
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is our first run-through.
Yes, we need to get to the end so we can
I'm hoping that the process will, after the first run-through, that we start at the beginning and start all over because it's, besides trying to craft the law, we are educating ourselves as to what the different aspects of the meeting is all is. And I would also suggest, rather than being armchair admirals, we at some point make a site visit to the areas that will be of concern so that we can actually see and craft the bylaw so that it fits everyone's purpose.
Okay, but that doesn't actually answer the question that I was trying to answer.
Well, the first question was, should we
Pick up where you left off. I think we were at general requirements.
We were at general requirements, that number eight right now, about the movable structures. About Trump.
Okay, I see.
That's on the
General requirements?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jack?
Just for public information, we were originally trying to develop this bylaw for September 26th, fall 2020. But the Selectmen have now announced that they are going to be pushing that back to sometime in the winter. I thought that the Congress might not be aware of this use of the bylaw as well.
Thank you, Jack. Was there a specific date?
Not yet. The first two weeks though are what was proposed, but no second.
Okay, thank you. General. You're at number eight, okay. So we had worked on this language already, the number eight. I don't think we finalized it. Were you finalized anything?
No, this language came from, Karen and I worked on this right at the end. I believe this came from the Craft Co-ops last draft.
Right.
And then we decided to leave off there and think about it till today.
Okay. So the language now?
So could I ask our lawyer? If we're going to allow movable structures for the co-op in the interest of uniformity, do we have to allow them for a cultivator or a micro-business as well?
That would be my recommendation that, you know, again, to go back to sort of, we talked about this principle of uniformity that you're not giving treatment, special treatment based on ownership, but basically you're looking at this in terms of impact on use of land. So if movable structures are going to be allowed, they should be allowed for anyone who's engaged in the business. Whether that be medical or cultivation license or a craft cooperative license.
I think some specifics would be in order because movable structures have a tendency to do exactly what they're described. And that can be dependent to agreeing to this because we'd like to know where they are. As I believe the CCC would like to know where they are. So when you consider a movable container, how do you consider controlling its placement so that it doesn't move on you? Just a thought.
I mean, I think that could be part of the site plan process. I mean, the idea of a movable container from the discussions we've had to date is the idea that some of these are like prefab structures that are going to be placed in a particular location on the lot. Perhaps that location may change, but as a condition of site plan approval, you know, they could look at the proposed location or propose some, you know, building envelope area in which those could locate. But the other proposal here is that they would need to be screened appropriately. So I think all of that could be part of your site plan review and conditioning, such that the structures are not necessarily visible.
Well, we'll read what we have and see if it satisfies our and it starts out as no RME or MNTCC that would be recreational medical, recreational medical cannabis cultivators shall be located inside a mobile vehicle such as a trailer, van, or truck unless operating as a licensed marijuana transporter. That takes care of most of my concern. Craft marijuana cultivator cooperatives, marijuana cultivators, MNTCCP, which would be medical, and micro-business shall be allowed to utilize movable structures, provided, however, natural screening shall be required as a condition of the special permit or site plan review approval as necessary to render such structures less visible from public or private ways or budding properties. The number of movable structures may also be limited as condition of the special permit to no more than two per parcel. Additional containers may be allowed if approved by the Planning Board in connection with site plan review and special permit process. Continue to the end. The number of movable structures utilized by craft marijuana cultivator cooperatives may also be limited as a condition of the special permit to no more than three per parcel for a tier-two cultivator. Additional containers may be allowed for a higher-tier cultivators if approved by the Planning Board in connection with the site plan review process described in Section 4, Paragraph 4 of this bylaw. That completes number eight. Any discussion by Karen? Are you satisfied with that language? I know that you're both hard on this.
Well, I would defer to Katie, but it seems to me that sentence that says the number of movable structures will be limited to two per parcel, and then we go on and say, but the number of movable structures for the co-op will be three. I think that we have to be consistent and say it's three for everybody. And then the language that we have about increasing it for a higher tier, I think it's fine, but I would defer to, doesn't that look like a conflict about that we say two and we say three?
Right, so that goes back to that uniformity principle. So right now, we have in here the number of movable structures, no more than two. This language was highlighted for sort of further discussion. I believe there is perhaps a proposal for
The co-op is asking for three.
The co-op is asking for three. So I think what the Planning Board needs to decide is, are you comfortable with two? Are you comfortable with three? And then whatever the number you decide on, it should be the same across the board. The language at the beginning here is basically four for any cultivator.
Well, I'm comfortable with three because of the site plan and special permit conditioning. I think there's a lot of safeguarding and screening. I don't want to stand in their way of having a space to process whatever they need to do in a movable structure.
So the restriction rests with the Planning Board recognizing a need or the ability of the applicant to screen. Is there a need to say anything else about them, especially the fact that they are movable containers? That sort of bothers me in some way, that once we permit them to be someplace, there would be a need to know that they just moved someplace in the middle of the night or something.
Well, I would think the site plan review, the condition that showed the location
Yes.
On the site plan review, the condition would be, they wouldn't be moved without further site plan review. And if someone violates that in the middle of the night, I mean, I guess that's an enforcement issue.
Yeah, I think that's the problem in my head is that ability to rely on enforcement. So I'm just
Mr. Chairman?
Trying to write it in.
The Planning Board is going to allow two or three. And perhaps we should include enforcement provisions.
Well, the allowance part, Peter, is more in terms of what the the amount of farming or production being done. It's more in line with that. And it's not that you automatically get to the containers. In fact, I think you'd have to prove that you need one container first before you get two containers.
So we're not going to vote?
No, we're going to discuss it.
We're just going to make it three.
Peter, that's not exactly the case. The case is, if you want to say right now that you think three is outlandish and two is even outlandish or one, then say it now.
I think we should do two.
And hold that.
I think we should vote.
The reasoning that you want to limit it to two is
To reduce the detrimental effects on the aesthetics of Turo, which is our primary focus should be to the property owners and the taxpayers of Turo, not to a small group of people.
And Paul again?
Mr. Chairman, I would, in the very first paragraph, it says, provide however, natural screening be required as condition of the special permit. I would add to that, natural screening or other approved screening. Because that makes it, if something is shifted, you don't pick up the trees moving someplace else. Also, my experience with some containers is simply putting camouflage netting over makes them disappearing. So, you know, we should see examples of that and at least have the option to have something other than just planting things and hoping they grow in the meantime. It's something that can happen right away.
And does it say natural screening or doesn't it just say screening?
It says natural screening and I would say or other approved screening so that we have the option. If somebody comes up with a better idea, we can improve that as part of the special permit. To continue.
Hang on a second, Paul.
Okay.
Don't jump around. You just went back to some section already that
No, it's still in paragraph eight.
First paragraph of Section 8?
Okay. I see it, I'm just
I think that's a good addition.
Okay. We would
Or other.
I'll just show them that we would. Is that okay?
Sure.
Bruce and Jack? So we'll add that language. I'm not so sure about the camouflage netting, but then again, I didn't serve in the military, I don't know.
Ooh, wobbly.
That's right. Okay. And now, as a Board, does the Board understand that stating a larger number of containers does not necessarily permit them automatically? Jack?
I see.
Bruce? And Karen, is that four?
I have a comment.
This is it? This is the time?
I would leave the third paragraph of Section 8, where the third section where it says the number of movable structures utilized by the we're singling them out. I would just admit that. And I would live with the second section which says the number of movable structures may be limited as condition of special permit to no more than two per parcel. Additional containers may be allowed if approved by the Planning Board in connection with site plan review and special permit process.
Which of course would include the butters.
Special permit will have the neighborhood come in
Absolutely.
And talk about it.
That's why I'm fairly comfortable with it. I understand that not all of us are. Does the Board would like to vote to approve? So you slightly changed the language, Paul, so.
No, I'm keeping exactly the language, except I'm leaving the third section out where it says the number of movable structures utilized by the craft marijuana cultivator. I leave that whole section out.
It's slightly redundant. The sentence that proceeds that, I think what you're really sort of negotiating here is are you going to do two or three in that sentence? Because this last paragraph, if you're not going to limit it just to the craft cultivators, the sentence, the last sentence sort of covers, it's basically saying the same thing. Right now, it says additional containers may be allowed for higher-tier cultivators approved by the Planning Board. The last sentence
I understand that. That's good.
Yeah.
So for the sake of non-redundant, you could remove the last section.
Yes, so and then your only determination is, is it going to be two or three per parcel in that second to last?
And I would like to try to add another little clarification, which Katie can help us on. We say two per parcel. I would say two per location. And the reason for that is, if someone is pulling three lots together, then we would be automatically allowing them six. Because each parcel would get to, if we say location, then we can limit the total number in one spot. Please do just a minute. I like false compromise, but I think the number in the second paragraph should be two. Peter, should say that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jack?
I have not visited any of the current sites that are in operation by the cooperative members. So I wonder how many potential storage facilities exist on these properties now? And we're considering permitting additional facilities designated specifically for marijuana cultivation. But I see that there could be confusion that would result from visits to a site where there already are containers presently being used there for agricultural use or whatever the purpose. I just mentioned that in general that this could kind of be a little ambiguous.
Thank you, Jack, and I think you're right that we don't know what already exists. So are we grandfathering what exists and adding to it, or are we not?
Mr. Chairman, I think that the site plan review process gives us control over that.
I like to establish language that accepts the current condition and proposed condition. So it hasn't been addressed, Jack just brought that up. For me, it would be important to know that a container has been on the property already for X number of amount of time. And now we're going to specifically add more. This is hard to process. And I think that's an important point.
So
We don't actually have a bylaw at this moment that restricts the use of regret, so there we go.
So the language that's proposed right here talks about how these structures are going to be used. So if someone has an existing structure and they're going to use it, an existing movable structure, they're going to start using that structure to grow, it would trigger this as part of review because the question is, how is that structure being used? If they already have some and they're looking to put additional on, then that last sentence would trigger the review for request for additional. then that last sentence would trigger the review for request for additional. Because then you would be exceeding the number being utilized on a single, at a single location.
Thank you. That's a good clarification for me. I appreciate that. Are you satisfied with that, with the clarification of it? Okay. Would the board like to strike the last two sentences? Leave two per parcel with the additional containers being included by the planning? And if you want to change the number to three?
I support the number being three. It is long, I mean, if it's two but not limited to more, if the planning board approves more, then maybe that achieves the same purpose.
I think it gives the planning board the control over the number, while not restricting it to being three. From what I've understood from the planning board, that they would consider what the needs are and also what the uses are, so that's...
I still want it to be, say, three, because two sort of implies a stop at two. So I would turn that into three.
Thank you. Well, I don't know what the, I understand that there might be different sizes, so we're not even specifying the size. I know that I've seen forty-foot containers, I've seen half that size also.
Mr. Chairman, they go from ten to forty-five feet as the standard right now, and they go from eight feet high to nine and a half feet high as a standard. So there's a lot of leeway. And I think we have, we can best satisfy all the needs here by leaving it to the site plan review process, because I believe that no one really has any experience here in this process. And it isn't until they go through a whole season that the growers will realize what it is. And it isn't until there's actually containers on the site, and what they look like, and how they affect the neighborhood, that the neighbors will know. So we are in a learning process.
Board, canvassing the board, language of two as it stands, Jack?
I'm fine with two. But I find also that depending upon the actual parcel size that's being utilized, we might be concerned about what percentage of lot coverage two could be, or if we were to allow three, or do we want to incorporate some kind of lot coverage, I'm understanding, maybe as well. Parcel coverage.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I agree with Jack, I think we have to watch out for a few of the school lot coverage.
Well, you're not moving quick.
I think that can be addressed through the site plan review and not get into the lot coverage. That's a really sticky subject that has a lot of unforeseen factors involved. I think it's...
In other words, it should be addressed in the site plan review process, rather than in the bylaw itself, is what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying, because I think the bylaw, and Katie can add to this or correct me, but it seems to me it's a broad statement of where and how these uses will take place. And if we try to get so specific, then we're going to run into a lot of problems, because we can't possibly foresee all the issues that could arise. So, I mean, it's kind of like the Constitution, it's a broad document that's subject to reasonable interpretation as we go. So I think if we just leave it flexible and not be so specific in terms of lot coverage, that we'll all be better off in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I really agree with Karen.
Fine.
I would just note that it is a very broad description. I mean, we're talking sort of shipping container or transport, I mean, but we haven't defined movable structure. I mean, it really could be a variety of...
It should could.
Types of structures. So the fact that this is part of the special permit site plan review process, and it's being sort of flagged as something that the planning board has discretion to review, gives the authorities to look at site-specific issues.
What the board has here allows more, doesn't have enough to limit, though. I could understand, I mean, it might be wise, but... What I sort of see when you put a limit in, you have like, no more than two, but we can let you have more, usually says, well, everybody was starting two. Yeah, it's okay. So that's why I'm hesitant to do three, because I know that's where everybody just started, three, so... In my head, that's what happens, I may be totally off off of that. So I'm more comfortable with saying additional containers may be allowed. And I like that the site plan review is mentioned in special permit process. So I think, in my, I'm okay with eliminating the special section at the end, keeping the two with the additional containers. And at this point, is that what you have on the screen? And the board is a consensus on removing that? Two consensus, removing that out. We're keeping the language that's there with the two at the moment.
And did we want to say two per lot?
Now, that, we didn't actually discuss that, it was brought up by Paul.
Location.
Or location.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, that's a restriction on some growers who wish to use the same parcel and consider their canopy to be doubled because they're using the same parcel. So my fear in that is that you're going to say now, you could restrict the canopy to parcel two. So I want to be very careful when you put those kinds of limits on the individuals who share the space. So I appreciate the thought, and you're right, it's not addressed in this guidebook.
Mr. Chairman, we are being cautious on this, because we're dealing with not one location, but we're dealing with craft cooperative, they're going to have multiple locations.
Yes.
And I believe probably the safest way to go about this is to hold a site plan review and a special permit for each location. Because that way, we can craft to the neighborhood the special permit. Some special permits might be, you know, we might be in the midst of a bunch of buildings, which would require different things. So one special permit for the whole craft cooperative doesn't seem to satisfy the individual needs of each circumstance. So by having a special permit and a site plan review for a specific location...
Okay, let me just clarify right now. Special permit, not each location, but site plan each location. Just want to try to clarify that.
Well, that may be problematic.
Well, oops. Pursue the clarification, because that's, you make it overly specific.
Well, if we give the special permit to everyone, if somebody drops out, which are problems?
As a craft cooperative, or even a corporation, if somebody leaves a corporation, the corporation does it to solve, if somebody leaves it. So if you have a co-op and somebody leaves the co-op, that doesn't give them permission to grow, that leaves the rest of the co-op with permissions.
The craft cooperative requires five members? No. So it could, everybody can drop out, but one, and it would still be a craft cooperative?
I think by each cooperative, I think there's a list too, right?
Yeah, but it's not a co-op. That's a curious thought.
There may be a number, but...
That could be a definition that we might require.
Well, I think it's part of the state definition of what, sort of, how the entity is comprised in order to qualify for the license in the first instance.
It's the seven reasons of a co-op.
Right, yeah.
It's in that seven reasons.
If you issue a special permit to a co-op, and there are multiple locations under that permit, and one of those locations ceases to operate, it wouldn't nullify the other permit. You just have something less than what was originally approved.
But what happens to the location that dropped out?
I mean, in terms of sort of its long-term ability to still operate under that special permit?
The licensing goes with the person, not with the piece of land.
No, the CCC licenses are location-specific.
Are we better off dividing it up as to location? Each location has this site plan review and has this special permit? Or are we better off doing a site plan review for every location and a special permit for every location? Which one is easier for us to function?
I see the special permit being handed to the co-op, while the site plan is site-specific to this board.
So, I mean, the problem we're dealing with here is that the state is licensing under a particular definition of, you know, how this entity is operating with respect to their cooperative business organization. And under that state license, there's the ability to have multiple locations up to that canopy cap. If you're just a marijuana cultivator license, it is a specific location-specific license issued by it. So when we're trying to translate that to the sort of special permit local review process, you're trying to superimpose sort of this state organizational structure of a multiple-location license on your sort of, on your local review. And we've tried to mirror sort of the state license use categories in the bylaw. So now you have a definition of a craft cooperative, which by its very definition is a multi-location site. So I think it's reasonable for the board to think about how it wants to handle a multi-location site with respect to its special permitted site plan review. If somebody comes in, if the craft cooperative comes in and says, "Well, our special permit for a craft cooperative, because it's a multi-site location, includes these three or four different locations in town, and we want approval for this under a single special permit." And then, for example, someone comes later and says, "We're going to add a site." Arguably, that would be an amendment or a modification of that special permit to add another location, because you've reviewed that entire entity as a multi-site special permit. I think the board does have the ability, it would take some sort of reworking of the bylaw, to say any cultivation site, regardless of whether it's part of a craft cooperative or a single cultivated license, requires its own special permit site plan review. Or certainly, there's the ability to say, with respect to a craft cooperative, we're going to give a sort of a single special permit, but each entity needs their own site plan review. I mean, I think there's different ways to structure it. But I think the complicated factor, the confusion, is sort of, we're dealing with state-imposed definitional organizational structure and trying to superimpose that on a local permitting process that doesn't typically take multi-site locations under the umbrella of a single special permit. Like if somebody owns multiple McDonald's, like each McDonald's is going to get their own special permit even if they're the same owner, and, you know, it's a franchise, he adds in multiple locations. So in some ways, it's trying to shun something into something that doesn't naturally exist in zoning in most instances.
Well, now we've identified it. Best way forward is all I'm trying to think of. And I would see that the cooperative applies as a group and receives the permission as a group. Therefore, I would see the special permit to be cooperative-specific. However, I would say the sites are separate. That's how I see it.
I agree.
If anyone wishes to argue that, Paul?
Given, again, a question with Katie. Will the special permit be divided up into the different sites? If it's on, you know, one special permit, but have specific things for each different site?
Right, so I mean, I think you could say, when you come in to apply for a special permit, you need to tell us all of the sites that are going to be operating under the special permit. And once that special permit is issued, it's for the sites that were proposed. And if there is some change in those sites, then you need to modify that special permit, because you're looking at an entity at sort of one point in time. And if their state license changes, then they add more sites? Or even, I suppose, if they take away sites, I think the board is apprised of who is operating under that special permit on which locations?
The, so we can have a single special permit with different sections. And I'll give you an example. One person, one of the craft cooperative, finds that they can grow 500 square feet of canopy. The next section, next person grows 5,000 square feet of canopy. So the 500-square-foot person would need only this much. The 5,000 might need this much more from the special permit. So can we structure the special permit so that we divide the requirements and responsibilities up for each section?
Yes, I could envision a special permit decision that says, the applicant is the craft marijuana cooperative, the location is, you know, parcels X, Y, and Z. And then you divide your decision. Parcel X, here's what's being proposed, here's what's approved, here's what's conditioned. Parcel Y, here's what's proposed, here's what's approved, here's what's conditioned. It's just under a single, they come in as a single applicant, but you're looking sort of location-specific across what is being proposed. And then the change in that, you know, if location Y needs to expand their canopy, they're coming in for a modification of that special permit as that decision relates to parcel Y.
So we would only have to alter that section of the special permit? And we would require...
Well, if it's a single special permit decision, I haven't seen anything proposed in the conversations, and I don't know, I can refer to Karen, if whether or not there was any discussion of craft cooperative wanting each parcel to be a standalone special permit site plan approval, or whether the preference was for the board to treat this as a single applicant, single approval?
I don't believe they expressed a preference about the special permit, but it just seems to me it's a legal entity, they're adding one special permit to that entity, not to every individual or for every location that the co-op intends to use. So I think what you discussed and what Paul discussed makes sense.
And along those lines, you can certainly structure your site plan approval in the same way as a special permit. It wouldn't necessarily need to be separate site approvals. You could do... You could do just as you did with the special permit. Here's your site plan approval for the cooperative. It's location-specific, A, B, C, you know, X, Y, Z. Here are the site plan conditions that apply, such that it's all in one decision.
Oh, wait a minute. I can be comfortable with it either way. But I see a couple of problems with lumping the site plan review in one. If one of them fails to be approved, then we would need some way to move forward, or everything is lost. How do we structure that? Let's see what I can get into with that. It's possible a site will be inappropriate.
Or, sort of to play about it from a legal perspective, if you conditioned one site such that there was a challenge to the conditions you imposed, and somebody sought to appeal that. If it was a standalone site plan approval, that site plan approval could be appealed while the other site plan approvals proceeded. It was all in one decision, that suggests that perhaps the entire entity might be held up while one entity appealed.
Correct, that's what I'm looking at. So, is it in the wording that the approval can happen, even though not all the site plans have been approved? Or is the wording that says, "Well, all the site plans must be approved before proceeding"? Do you understand what I'm saying? Could it be these different locations?
So I think we need to go back and look at the site plan approval, special permit language, if we wanted to qualify that.
So, in other words, it's not this language that it troubles you. It's more the...
There's language, I think, that talks about the special permit granting authority. It's followed by a special permit to the planning board. This would be one location where you could perhaps distinguish craft cooperators from other types of, because everybody else is going to be a location-specific, single-location-specific entity. So you may want to add a sentence at the end there that says, "Craft marijuana cultivation cooperative shall apply for a single special permit..." "...a single special permit and individual site-specific site plan review," or something.
Katie, are we left with the same problem here? Somebody fails a site plan review, or is in violation in some way? Does that jeopardize the whole special permit?
That's what we're trying to write, we're trying to write that so we're not jeopardizing it, I hope.
Yeah, I mean, I see. Let's see. "Craft marijuana cooperative shall apply for a single special permit and apply for individual site-specific or location-specific site plan approval."
Instead of individual...
I mean, so this is a location-specific. Yeah, location-specific. I mean, this is going to ultimately be a question for your zoning enforcement officer if there is an issue with one particular entity. I mean, enforcement can be location-specific, I would say, under the zoning enforcement officer's discretion.
Well, of course, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get to, the fact that we can't spoil the bunch with one dead apple kind of concept. We can't eliminate the permit by one... We're trying to just craft this bylaw so that not only do we not make the whole thing fall apart if somebody fails to meet the site plan review.
Yeah, I mean, so as this is proposed, I mean, what this is going to look like procedurally is basically you're going to get a single special permit application and a bunch of individual site plan review applications. You can hear everything together at one sort of, you know, open hearing. You can hear everything together. It's just that you're going to have a single special permit decision that you file with the town clerk, and then individual site plan approvals that each get filed with the town clerk for each location.
Okay, brainstorm.
I mean, I could, I see the appeal part of this perhaps being the main reason for doing this, because I think even if you did this as a single special, or a single site plan approval with location-specific conditions, and enforcement of that could really be location-specific, even if it was all on one decision. So...
Okay, I'm good, Paul.
So we have a single special permit with sections X, Y, and Z. Works for me.
Okay. We're going to leave this language in the review this after we get through the end.
Section B two.
What?
Section B two.
Let's try to move on to section nine. This section, number nine, says, "No RME or MMTC shall be located inside a building containing residential units including transient housing such as motels or hotels."
Problematic.
Do you have a problem with this?
Yes.
But it's not even two sentences. Get it?
It's a single sentence. If we talk about, "You cannot have anything inside a building that contains a residential unit." That's problematic. For example, "There are standalone buildings, which would be appropriate for marijuana retailers that have apartment stores."
Then it would actually be standalone.
Well, it is, it is one building.
This doesn't say standalone, this is residential units.
If we changed it to, "Inside a building containing transient housing such as motels and hotels."
Take out the residential.
Take out the residential. Because that way, a person who owns a retailer can live upstairs, be his own security guard.
Yes, there was, yes.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to add. The members, members of the co-op or a micro-business might want to conduct activities in their home, like making a product, manufacturing. And so that was the main reason the co-op had asked that we not prohibit using a building with a residential unit, because you might have your own kitchen to make a product. So if that takes care of it, if we take out the word residential and that takes care of it, I'm okay with it, but I just want to be sure that that's covered.
And to the extent somebody would be using a residential unit for something like processing or manufacturing, any space that is used would have to be part of that license approval from the state. And so they're going to be looking, if someone's proposing to do something in their own, the state is going to be looking at that as part of the license, or should be looking at it if it disposes that as part of the license application to make sure that the location is secure and that it is, you know, in compliance with the board's health and food safety requirements, because there are a lot of state requirements that apply to things like product manufacturing, especially where food is being created.
And I assume they would reveal that in their site plan review or...
So it would have to be disclosed in their state licensing application.
Board comfortable with removing residential units?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So it would read, "No RME or MMTC shall be located inside a building containing transient housing such as motels and hotels." Sounds good.
Is there something, is there anything missing from there?
I'm not...
Do you want more of that too?
I mean, like I said, anybody who's going to do something like this in a location that says a hotel or motel would have to get state approval to do it in a motel or motel, so... I mean, you couldn't do it in there, I mean. But, you know, you have the additional protection of the state approving these locations.
Fine.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask our town councilor a question?
You have been.
Thank you. Because we're doing this in a residential district, and because some people have homes on the property, when a craft marijuana cooperative has a site plan review and a special permit, and they're up and running, is there a separation between what they're doing as a cooperative and what they can do within their own home? For example, if you go to a person's house today, they can turn around and give you a couple of joints to take home, I think it's up to five grams. And real good friends, somebody can give somebody else an ounce. And that's part of what goes on throughout it. If all of a sudden there's another layer of law, a craft cooperative, what happens to their ability for somebody to join their work?
Well, there's personal use laws in place with respect to what you can cultivate on your own and what you can give away without authorization. If you are growing commercially under a commercial license, the ability to give and gift in your product is a different, governed by a different set of laws. So the commercial stuff, I mean, like I said, that's tracked, seen to sale. You're not going to have the same ability to, you know, give away or share.
Right, but do they put their license in jeopardy by giving some from their own home? If somebody has joined and go away?
You have to think of this as a licensed commercial operation. It happens to be located on these farming agricultural parcels, and many people also have their residences, but it is a licensed commercial operation, and it's going to be subject to the standards and the laws that apply to commercial operations. And if they violate those, and there's enforcement by the state, then, you know, certainly licenses could be put in jeopardy.
So if the state says they can't give anything to the public, then they're giving that right up?
You can't even have it.
That commercial way.
Yeah, you can't, you can't give away your gifts, commercial products.
I think the question he's asking is, if you do have a commercial license, can you then have your 12 plants or six plants that you grow not tracked for your own personal use, and then you can give those to whoever chooses?
Is that your question?
Yes, and so if you roll something out of those 12 plants, you give it to somebody, it's not a problem?
That's right.
Thank you.
Anywhere to begin, how about number 10? Okay, "To ensure compatibility with the residential character of Truro, all buildings permitted for marijuana cultivation, processing, and manufacturing under this section shall be limited to one story in height plus basement. Enclosed buildings used for marijuana cultivation and processing may have a usable attic and shall have a barn-like appearance. Metal-sided buildings, steel buildings, and other prefabricated or pre-engineered buildings may be allowed for marijuana cultivation and processing if the design is determined by the planning board to be harmonious with surrounding residential neighborhoods, are within the bylaws' size limitations, and are fully compliant with the ACT, the commissions, regulations, and the bylaw."
Mr. Chairman?
All right, pay attention, who's speaking?
Me.
Okay.
I would like to register my strongest possible objection to allowing cultivation in buildings in the residential area. I cannot believe that the people of Truro would allow such a thing if they fully understood what they were being asked. We are not the place for the industrial drug production in buildings. We're just not, we're not the place for it. That's my, I think, and furthermore, I don't remember how this got into this bylaw without being voted on. However, I do have a solution. And that is that we reconsider the use of an overlay district, as has been suggested by numerous people. And I think the suggestion was to use a, I think, legacy farm overlay district is what was recommended, as areas in Truro that have been used for farming traditionally should be allowed to grow marijuana on their land in the residential district, but not outside the overlay district. And I know I passed around a very brief thing that actually Karen found online about them. And if you look, if you Google "use of overlay zoning for marijuana growing", you will find dozens of towns in Massachusetts have proposed that, and some of them, I think, have already happened. Am I right about that?
Overlay?
Overlays. And it's a perfectly acceptable thing to do, and it would allow, actually, by defining a special location effect for our legacy farms, it would allow us to do other things that would be beneficial to them in maintaining them as farms. That's just a suggestion.
And I'll just say that the co-op has identified some of those farming areas. But there are other farming areas who are not before us at this time. Do you propose then to exclude them from the overlay, because they are not here at this time?
I think one way we could do it is just to say that areas have been used for farming for a certain period of time, or filed, you know, the farming tax return for a certain period of time, and where, you know, and it would have to be, there would have, obviously, we wouldn't include every place where somebody grows a tomato in their backyard. But I think there are farms, such as Perry's Farm, for example, Mr. Stavlin's Farm, that has been used for farming for, I don't know, centuries. And that is, that is something that we've identified as, that we want to continue, is to allow farms in Truro.
Okay, let's consider, let's consider the overlay concept for a minute then. Not that I'm eliminating that concept, I'm just trying to pursue every avenue.
I'm not sure how the overlay district would work, or exactly why we're addressing it in this section on structures. I mean, we've now reached this section on structures and greenhouses, and I'm not sure we need to say buildings need to have a barn-like appearance. But, again, I'm not sure how an overlay district would affect structures. The co-op has proposed structures related to a lot area, and this section in this draft bylaw refers to square footage. And so maybe overlay district could address those terms. But I think we should remember that right now, anybody farming in Truro can put up a greenhouse, put up a building, do what they want to do. I mean, we're treating, we're treating people who hope to grow commercial cannabis like they're growing some, you know, some nerve gas, or something that we should be terrified of. And these are people just trying to... And these are people just trying to be able to grow this commercial cash crop. And we're putting many more restrictions on them than anybody else in Turo right now, today, has, you know, for farming right now. I mean, there's a 5,000 square foot greenhouse, Mr. Karen just told me, at one farm. So again, I don't know why this is a highly regulated business, a commercial enterprise, and why we want to just make this so difficult for these people. It's just, I just don't understand. I think there's plenty of safeguards so far and that will come up in our deliberations and that we just, I don't know, I don't know why we're trying to keep these people from, from operating when right now, if I wanted to grow tomatoes, I could cover probably my entire life, except for the setbacks, with buildings and greenhouses and grow tomatoes. So this is a plant, then I'd grow.
Okay, where is it?
Number 10. Mr. Paul?
I, uh, what was it, Chairman?
Oh, I see Paul's name.
Get it, Paul, I mean, I don't want...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My, my familiarity with overlay districts is, at one point, we researched putting in historic district. We're coming along Castle Road. And I'm familiar with other places on Cape Cod along 6A where there's an historic overlay district which has another set of rules that govern taking down trees and coloring and construction of homes. In, in this case, an overlay district, if we were to just pick out separate sections, let's say the Perry Farms, Stadler's, and the other places that, that are currently growing vegetables, I believe it would be delimiting the spot zoning. Unless we included everybody in one big overlay district.
So the way that overlay districts work is that they basically, they overlay your existing zoning and then a bylaw such as this marijuana bylaw would oppose, would impose additional regulations to a use that is seeking to locate on those parcels. Overlay districts have been a very effective tool for many communities in identifying specific locations in which they would like to see these types of marijuana uses locate. The flexibility of an overlay district is that you can sort of start out with your initial parcels. It's basically an amendment of your zoning map to overlay the district on top of your existing map. And then if you, at some point in time, want to include additional parcels in that district, another vote of town meeting to amend that map to increase the district. But the bylaw that you passed with respect to use continues to apply to anybody who's operating within that district. So it's sort of a more surgical way of identifying the particular parcels on which you're comfortable having these types of uses located. And I know that the board has, has had, you know, struggled a little bit with the idea of allowing these types of uses within the residential district. So an overlay would be able to, to allow you to have some of this operate within your residential district without opening every single parcel. So overlays are not typically spot zoning unless you're like singling out one parcel, you know, and, and...
Well, that's what we've been talking about.
No, they need legacy farms and easily defined...
There has to be a reasonable zoning purpose behind the identification of the sites. I think that, for example, including parcels that have traditionally been used as farming or could potentially be eligible based on their size or location would be a reasonable criteria for including something in, in an overlay district. So I, I don't have concerns about spot zoning with an overlay district if there's a reasonable basis behind the selection of properties that are included in that district. What it would look like if you were to include something like this with the work we've done so far is basically you would, you would replace, where we have the table of use regulations that has been inserted in here with sort of the districts and the parcels, your overlay would basically replace that. Instead of having a table that tries to pigeonhole things in the district, it would be, the uses shall be allowed pursuant to the marijuana overlay district, which then gets passed as a, as a map amendment. So it's another way of doing what you're basically proposing to do with just a little bit more surgical sort of isolation of those locations. But, you know, either approach is legally viable.
I think, Mr. Chairman, it would solve the problem that we have of, I mean, building warehouses in the residential neighborhood after cleared, plowed, flat the land? That, that's really not a good idea. How does it solve that problem?
Really?
Well, because that's the only part of the residential zone that people would be allowed to cultivate marijuana in, and build structures.
I think that we have already identified the locations and we're not permitting it anywhere.
Well, but we're presum, we're, we're considering allowing structures in the residential zone. So you want one next to your house?
We're actually trying to, we're actually trying to write a way to control some of those structures.
Okay, so we, we have not...
We don't actually have those controls at this point.
We have not yet made a decision whether growing should be allowed in the residential zone or whether structures should be allowed in the residential zone. And then those two items are going to be voted on. Is that correct?
Yes. As far as the craft cooperative?
As far as anybody?
As far as our, our permitting table?
Those two issues have not been decided by a vote of this board.
I think you're taking this off topic. That's what I think. It's, I don't want to really be derailed as far as what we have written here. We're talking about the structure.
Well, we can bring it up.
We don't actually have those controls at this time. So if I wanted to build a structure on my property that, let's say, was a storage unit and I wanted to build it in a certain way, what restrictions do we have other than a building permit?
But the state law allows us to make restrictions for buildings to be used for marijuana. That's the difference.
Consequently, we have been written into this by...
Consequently, we should keep them out of our residential area. That's what we should do, as most towns have. How many towns allow growing in their residential zone? Unrestricted growing in their residential zone? Anybody?
Well, I, I can't really answer that question. I mean, there are many communities that have not enacted specific zoning and so certainly, under their existing zoning classifications, this is true, allows cultivation of other agricultural products in residential zoning districts. Some communities have chosen not to do marijuana-specific zoning and are, you know, allowing those types of use to proceed. So there are some communities, certainly, that, that would be in that category. But I, I couldn't answer to the number of communities that are specifically zoned for residential cultivation. I mean, it's, it's all very community-specific.
Mr. Chairman?
Paul, I, I want to try to move a little quicker, but I understand that there's a distinction.
To go back to number 10.
We're on number 10. We never, we left it.
You can hit it off there.
I know, but we're out in the field, but we're on number 10.
I think this may be best dealt with as one of the items in the special permit. Because, you know, here we're saying, "Shall be limited to one story in height plus basement." And then we're saying in the next sentence, "Shall have a barn-like appearance." I've never seen a one-story barn.
Neither have I.
So...
Well, I might live it.
When, when we get to metal-sided buildings, et cetera, prefabs, well, what if they wanted to build a barn out of natural materials? So I think that maybe we should have a list of things which are acceptable to, in the special permit process and leave it out of the general bylaw. It gives us more leeway.
I prefer Karen's work on this.
Uh, I'd probably pass that off to Katie, but I tend to agree that it's better to leave it for special permiters like you. It's, we can anticipate every, every possible size of building material.
Yeah, that's coming forward or not even conceived of yet.
On the other hand, this bylaw, if it is enacted, will be a vote of a supermajority in the people of Turo. And that carries a great deal more force than anything that we might do during a site review.
Well, I would say this, Peter, you object to it being here and we're willing to take it out. And that...
No, what I object to is allowing buildings to be used for marijuana cultivation in the residential zone, and I think Turo will, will not like that either. If people can be, if it could be explained to people what it might really mean, they will vote against it, I believe. And I believe it is detrimental to this town to do this and a great mistake.
Well, I'm, I'm not clear. I understand you're against it, which doesn't sound like a step forward to me. It just sounds like you're against it. And...
Well, the step forward would be to not permit it.
Well, that's also an opinion by you, which means we cross another line that I don't want to cross right now. And I also see a reason to eliminate it from the bylaw because not only does this rely on the planning board being an opinion about harmony, I could see that being a problem right there. I like to be specific about things that are not permitted. And buildings in Turo are permitted in the residential district and in the commercial district. I can see why this is, why a section was written to try to address it. And I can see why you would object to it. Because as soon as you write something down, it sounds as though that's what's going to happen. And that's not necessarily true. But when it's not even there, then we don't have control over it in this bylaw. It seemed appropriate to say, "Deal with it in the site plan review or in the special permit."
Mr. Chairman, I worked on some review criteria a while ago, which is much less specific, but I think addresses a lot of concerns. And I'll just quickly just re, my proposed language was, "The planning board would review cannabis operations, site plans, with supporting information, and that operations to be cited and implemented in a manner that is keeping with the scale of other buildings and structures in the immediate vicinity in order to preserve the characteristics of existing neighborhoods or business districts. And evaluations will be based on the following standards and criteria." This is just an idea. Relation of building structures, including but not limited to greenhouses and new buildings and fences to the environment. Proposed development should relate to the existing terrain in the lot. Building design landscaping. Proposed development should be consistent with the prevailing character and scale of the buildings and structures in the neighborhood through the use of appropriate scale, massing, building materials, fencing, screening, lighting, and other architectural techniques. Preservation of landscape. The landscape should be preserved in its natural state insofar as practicable by minimizing any grade changes in removal of vegetation and soil." So, and I, and I have other areas, but I think that, again, that gives us a guide without having all these specific baseline or maximum square footage requirements or lot requirements, et cetera. So I'm just interested to hear anybody else's reaction to something like that.
Here's, here's my reaction. The reaction I have is based on when someone comes forward with a plan and says, "This is my plan," that means they have already spent time determining what their plan is. And if we turn around at that point and say, "We think that plan is absolutely inappropriate because that's our opinion," then where does that take the person who's the advocate? To try to start all over? Which is fine with me, except for if the bylaw is to be productive, it should guide people in a direction to begin with. That's what I'm trying to say, is that it shouldn't be specific as much as a good guidance of what would maintain Turo's... I don't like, not just particularly me, but I mean, Turo's character for the past 300 or 400 years. So... Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jack?
So an advocate could come before the board and express in a general way what they would like to do with their site on a very preliminary level. And that's where we hash out things currently that progress to a site plan approval.
Thank you, Jack. So do you see that language existing in site plan review? Karen?
Well, I, I looked at our existing site plan review and tried to think of language specific to cannabis. I mean, I think we could put it in this bylaw or would it need to be a separate site plan review criteria or additional criteria for specific to cannabis?
What, what I might recommend is, and we have incorporated by reference previously in another section, the special permitting and site plan review standards. So anybody that comes before the board would be subject to what is already in your bylaw for those review standards. If there are additional standards that would apply to this specific use, I don't think you want to necessarily amend section 78, for example, to put those in. You could have a section in the bylaw that says, "In addition to the criteria in, you know, section, special permit section, and, and section 78, site plan review." The, the following additional site plan and special permit criteria shall be considered by the board and enumerate those within this bylaw so that you're incorporating what already exists. Plus, if there are a few additional criteria that the board should, wants to consider with respect to these uses, it could be in the context of the previous bylaw.
How best to get it? That's the question. Number 10, "To ensure compatibility with the residential character of Turo, all buildings permitted for marijuana cultivation, processing, and manufacturing, under this section..." I would try to eliminate most of follows that and refer to some of the language that Karen mentioned that would be an addendum to our site plan review. You mentioned law coverage?
Uh, I didn't.
It's mentioned in the next section.
Okay, fine. I thought that this, this language was not terrible. It's not that it simply permits metal buildings. It's specifically trying to control how they are structured in town. So no matter what else, how we get this number 2 to be satisfied to be board, to the town, and to be cooperative, so that we can just move along. Katie, have any suggestions for us? Criteria 10 to 13. I think, okay, I think...
I mean, I, I think the concern that is, we're trying to address here is, is aesthetic. It's, it's the appearance of these buildings.
Yes.
So what you're really looking for is, is that language that talks about... So, what you're really looking for is that language that talks about, you know, harmonious with the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Concern about the screening and the barn-like structure is probably overly restrictive in the meaning, but, um, no. Karen, Karen, can you read again the language that you had?
Oh, actually, I was just looking in seventy point four.
Seventy point four, it's quite comprehensive in its standards.
And it actually incorporates on page fifty-two, the building design and landscaping criteria, which is prevailing character and scale, appropriate materials. It addresses landscape, the relation of the buildings and structures to the environment. So I think that, again, this language is, I think, broad enough to cover the concerns.
I think you don't need to necessarily reinvent the wheel for every use. You know, if you have very comprehensive language in your site plan review section that addresses many of these concerns and we incorporate by reference the fact that the board will be applying those standards to these uses, then we can defer back to those sections for purposes of your review and design criteria.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Will we ask our town attorney to give us some reference language to fit in here?
Like, I think we, I think when we talked about planning board as special permit.
In the, when they change in section D one, we referenced the...
Yes, so what we have right now is special permit applications shall comply with the requirements of section thirty point eight of the bylaw and the site plan review shall be conducted in accordance with section seventy point seven. What we might want to include there is that, you know, all special permit and site plan review criteria in these sections shall apply to the uses. Something along those lines. So we're not just saying that your application, you know, is procedurally going to be handled in accordance with those sections, but also subsequently, the review criteria will apply.
And I'm questioning, is the commercial site plan review and residential, so if it's the uses in a commercial district, we would apply a commercial site plan review design criteria in residential, residential?
So is the residential site plan review specific to residential structures or just the residential district?
It is for the seashore.
It's for the seashore.
So that would be the seashore.
That's correct. So how do we?
So would be the commercial site plan review criteria, right?
Well, that language doesn't exist in the commercial setting. So what we need to do is somehow reference this language.
Yeah, sorry.
Which exists within the seashore site plan review to this section. Should we just copy it and off?
So perhaps what the board could do right now is take a look at the commercial standards. And then with the understanding that that would be what would apply to sort of by nature the use. And then, and then if you want to take a look at the residential ones and see if there are some additional standards in there that might not have been captured that you would also want to apply to those uses and perhaps call those sections out specifically with respect to this section.
We just say section seventy.
Here, we can just reference it to the bylaw?
We don't even specify point three or point four.
So, yeah, so that might merit some clarification.
It's usually best to put the actual language in the bylaw so people can see it. So we just cut and paste, bam.
Well, we've done it.
Yeah, and you don't, if that language is already written out in section seventy point four, there's no need to cut and paste seventy point four into this new section of the bylaw. You just need to refer specifically to seventy point four as being applicable in terms of design standards. But the point that I can make now is that there is perhaps some language in the residential site plan criteria that might be applicable or that the board would want to see applicable to its review of these projects and want to be clarified or somehow bring that language either by reference to the section or by reference here specifically.
I do think the residential site plan review has more sensitive criteria about massing, et cetera.
Two different words. Yeah.
I would just like to point out that these criteria are soft and subjective. And you know how the town of Turo is implying soft and subjective criteria to get hold of. That's why it's better to have a supermajority opposed.
So, Mr. Chairman, the comment about being soft and subjective. I wonder if all the members are aware of our zoning definition of building? If we ever want to review that, but we're using this word of building within this bylaw. And if I can read, give us a page, is that ten? Page four of our section ten. Almost there, Jack. The page is turning slow down. Got it. The word "building" shall be any three-dimensional enclosure, portable or fixed, temporary or permanent, and then it is on. But I read these, I read this first partial sentence that is being significant in as much as some of the issues we've addressed previously about portable structures.
So, one thought on the fact that you have different site plan review criteria for commercial versus residential. I think some of the concern that I'm hearing is that many of these farms that are proposing to do cultivation would be in a residential district. Now, they're not in the seashore. They would not always be subject to these review criteria. But some of the same concerns that apply to seashore-sensitive properties might be appropriate when you're considering a commercial-type enterprise in a residential zoning district. So, so one way to do this would be to simply say that anybody who is proposing marijuana cultivation within the residential zoning district shall also be subject to the design review criteria specified in section seventy point four, was it D, right? Oh, no, it's seventy point four.
Seventy point, seventy point four.
Well, seventy point four is the entire section. What you're probably most concerned about is the review criteria, which is subsection D. So it wouldn't necessarily mean that you're pulling the residential site plan criteria in respect to, you know, somebody who wants to do a retail operation in your commercial center. I mean, that might be more appropriate to limit your review to the site plan criteria that would apply to commercial uses anyway. But if you're cultivating in a residential zoning district, then those additional review criteria would be part of the site plan review for those uses.
Jessica, are you able to?
Yep.
Develop a little language?
We can develop language, but I mean, that was sort of just as, listening to sort of the way the discussion is going and what it is, I think you are perhaps trying to capture here.
Does that satisfy you somewhat, Peter?
It's better.
Better? Well. No, that's okay. Just say better.
It's better.
Thank you. That's okay. If I get you started, it's just gonna go back to no.
And then the other thing, I mean, we could maybe move this into a standalone section. I mean, we're sort of discussing about where this should go. But then the other thing you cannot do is you can put in language that says the planning board has the ability to waive any designer criteria that is not applicable to, you know, so it gives you some flexibility that you're not necessarily having to apply criteria that can be applicable based on a site-specific or location-specific application.
Okay. That would be good to me.
That's good. And so the board knows the review criteria states relation of buildings and structures to the environment, building design and landscaping, preservation of landscape, circulation, which is questionable, and lighting.
Yes.
It covers a wide swath with that one.
And I'm much more comfortable with that than the things that... Shall I move to eleven or am I able to move to eleven at this point?
I may help Jess tweak that language a little bit after, because we sort of have it as a placeholder there.
Yep, we can move on to eleven.
So far, so good?
So far, so good.
Number eleven, to ensure compatibility with the residential character of Turo and the surrounding neighborhood, all enclosed buildings permitted for use by an RNE or an NNTC shall be limited in size in proportion to lot size. The total average floor area of all enclosed buildings, but not including living room floor area, utilized for an eligible use here under, shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the total lot area. That was worked out with the co-op? Some of that?
I didn't say it was, I mean, that's what the, that's what the co-op raises.
Can we just discuss that?
I think it's a lot.
Covering.
It should be, yes, yes.
So let's comprehend exactly what that means. All enclosed buildings permitted by, for use would be limited to, and that doesn't include living space. So that's in addition to living space, would be twenty-five percent of the total lot area. So, I know Paul has his calculating mind ready. We have two acres, Paul.
Okay.
We have a five, let's say we have a five thousand square foot lawn. We don't even count that, like even deduct it from the total square footage, or two acres. How large amount of buildings are they allowed to build? That's the mathematical question for your SAT score.
Twenty-one five, twenty-one thousand five hundred.
Would be the bill?
Would be the bill.
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah.
Let's just score that.
My question is, are we talking about hoop houses and?
Any building whatsoever.
But is a hoop house, which doesn't need a building permit, a building?
Let me see what that actually says again. To ensure compatibility with the residential character of Turo and surrounding neighborhood, all enclosed buildings that are permitted for use. Now, if it's a hoop house, it would still need to be permitted. It doesn't need to permit from the building department, but it needs to be allowed to be used for growth as far as I understand. Maybe I'm wrong. Katie, maybe you want to?
Well, I mean, this is an area where there may be an ambiguity here that we want to specify that whether hoop houses and greenhouse houses are included in this calculation because I believe there was some discussion about whether or not those would be part of this calculation or not.
There was, and maybe we need a definition of buildings back in the definitions section.
Or we need to say all enclosed buildings, including, you know, greenhouses, hoop houses, and permanent structures or movable structure, I mean.
Because you're referring to, I think, on number twelve, that Mr. Steinman, Chuck Steinman, had proposed fifty percent of lot area would be allowed for greenhouses. And that was his proposal, which again is a lot of...
Territory.
A lot of territory to cover. And the twenty-five percent is...
Twelve excludes from...
Those are kind of not a big...
So twenty-five percent will not exceed it, so that's a cap. It's not a minimum, not guaranteed by any means. It's just, it's just a cap. Doesn't mean we would have to allow it, correct? In the twenty-five percent language?
We need to consider eleven and twelve together because eleven talks about buildings and then not exceeding twenty-five percent of total lot area. Number twelve is talking about that greenhouses with walls and rooms predominantly of glass or translucent materials would be excluded from that building size limit. It would be allowed to cover up to fifty percent of the lot area. So I think you have to look at these together and decide sort of from a policy standpoint, whether to treat greenhouses and hoop houses as buildings subject to a twenty-five percent limitation. Are you comfortable having a larger lot coverage area if the buildings that are taking up that space are the type described as greenhouses?
Mr. Chairman, for...
I tell you what, Paul, let me just, let me just go through this. So I read eleven, and did you just read through twelve percent or did you just?
Um, right.
Okay. So we will consider them both together. And Paul, go ahead. What did you want to say?
For perspective, I know that greenhouses aren't the same as grapevines, but the winery is on six acres. It has twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-four square feet of building, which covers four point nine percent of the property. And the vines, there's a hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-three square feet, which covers forty-four point eight two percent of the property.
Okay, that's information, right? Do you know?
Just, just information. The Old Bridge Road property.
What place is it? You have to identify that to me.
Okay. There are three locations that the co-op has come up with.
Okay, okay.
The Old Bridge Road property, John Hopkins, has two separate blocks of total of eighty-six thousand two hundred and nine square feet. There's eight hundred and nineteen square feet of building. So the buildings cover point nine five percent of the property. And a five thousand square foot canopy would cover five point eight oh percent of the property. If we use the winery standard, they would be able to, the forty-four percent, they would be able to have thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fourteen square feet. Location number two, Stotterman on Long Mill Road, they have three hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet, of which five hun, five hun, five thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet are buildings, three separate buildings. A five thousand square foot canopy on that particular lot would cover one point four nine percent of the property. And in Cabral Farm, that's a piece of property that's four hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet. There's no buildings there. A five thousand square foot canopy would cover one point one seven percent of the property.
Thank you. I think I get an idea of what you're getting at, but if I had a half acre of lot and was part of the co-op.
Well, we talked of putting a minimum lot size for location, yes, one point.
So if I had, all right. I get the relationship and I'm just, I'm wrestling with it. Does it give the planning board enough control to not affect the appearance of Turo with twenty-five percent?
Well, I think that it's, it would be on a case, by case basis or a location by location basis because if the property is tucked away and no one can see it or hear it or smell it, then what, why would we, why would we impose direct coming-in restrictions on the lot coverage? On the other hand, if it's a highly exposed area, then maybe we wouldn't allow anything close to twenty-five percent. So I think, again, location by location is probably the best and safest way to go.
Is this language provided for that?
Not twelve, in my opinion.
I think we should follow Katie's advice and just combine, whether it's twelve, just to say, a building, and buildings also include greenhouses, hoop houses, or what other?
Since it's the aesthetics of the situation that is at issue, all buildings, everything that's not natural land. Since it's the aesthetics of the situation that is at issue, all buildings, everything that's not natural laid should count.
Peter, I mean, how you don't want any growing intro, especially in residential district, but that's where the farms are. That, in, in my view, we have to try to come up with a, with a workable bylaw that the co-op will support, because otherwise we're going to have no bylaw and we're going to have a chaotic situation, um, including all kinds of buildings, I would think. I mean, right now, there are two storage containers sitting on a lawn on Town Trozen Road, with no restrictions at all on that, or I could park one in my house. So we're just, I mean, I feel like we're just trying to get a, a reasonable compromise to let the co-op grow their crop.
Well, that's why I proposed the overlay, because that would solve that issue.
Well, I mean, I want to circle back to that. I'm not clear how it exactly solves the issue. Would, would it be the farms we've identified and then for people in the future? Would it be anyone with a one and a half acres, um, who intends to farm? Because I don't think we can just walk in and can be, Katie, certain parcels and never allow anyone else, or?
Well, I mean, the overlay district creates, it, it enumerates the parcels on which these uses can locate. Um, and it's done by amendment of the zoning map. So as with any zoning map amendment, if you wanted to include more parcels at a later date, then go back to town meeting and you would span the overlay, overlay district to include additional parcels. But it, it requires a vote of town meeting for the designation of the parcels that are part of that district.
In the first place.
In the first place and any subsequent amendment thereafter.
So other farms could join, but it would require town meeting to include it?
As an amendment to your zoning map, an increase of the overlay district.
Sounds good.
Actually, Peter, we're not in the overlay process at the moment. And every time you go there, you take us away from this process. And I appreciate it, but it doesn't...
But they're related, they're related. Where we have to go.
Okay, let me, let me just try to say this. If it's the overlay, then the act, in what way would it obstruct us from doing what we're doing right now?
We don't have to do this.
I think we need to do this and finish, because I can't keep going back to the overlay and ignore this zone. Let's just try to finish what we're doing. Did you change any of this language?
I think that if eleven and twelve are going to be combined, then I think we need greater specificity as to what constitutes unenclosed building permitted for use by an RME or an MTC.
Okay. Good point, and, and what I need is the board to have the ability to make the discern, to discern whether a proposed use of any structure for growing marijuana is going to be controlled with this.
So then perhaps what we do is we take up the word building, or we add to what we say, all enclosed buildings or structures permitted for use by an RME or MTC, including structures used for cultivation and processing, or all structures used for cultivation and processing shall be limited in size in proportion to lot size. So building and structure should be a global inclusion of anything.
But Katie going on to twelve?
But I think we're going to get rid of twelve.
Completely.
Well, if you're going to put a single, if you're going to consider all of your structures and buildings under a single lot size cap there, and you're not going to call out greenhouses and hoop houses as being exempt from that consideration.
Okay, so did, did you want to then keep the twenty-five percent at that point for now?
So Jess, I would say all enclosed buildings and structures.
Does that give us any latitude in a parcel where everything is so, uh, hidden that it wouldn't make any difference? Doesn't give us any latitude to improve it larger than twenty-five percent? Or just bring it up now, because once we try to clarify it, we're stuck.
Right, so, so now, as of right now, you have a limit on twenty-five percent of total lot area. If you want to have some discretion to exceed that, I mean, then, then we're back into the territorial work with like, you know, two, two, two structures, except you can have more subject to approval. Um, I mean, you can set twenty-five percent as sort of your general by right threshold with the ability to increase that, but what I'm hearing is that there may be a desire depending on the, the lot area, the location, to perhaps decrease that if it's not appropriate, you know, if you have a small lot in a more densely settled area in which everything is going to be visible. You may not want twenty-five percent lot coverage, um...
And a single, a single thought?
Well, you know, the, the co-op supported this twenty-five percent, so, um, I, I would say we just go with that twenty-five percent and not, not plan for larger, more coverage, okay?
I mean, it's not small. I think we determined that it's not small.
So I guess my only question is, did you want to have any discretionary language to allow?
I think we should allow...
Did you exceed the twenty-five percent?
Paul also says yes. Peter, I'm going to say, guess it's not. And I'm okay with the language without the discretionary language at this time. It might need to be revisited, but a limit that I can see on an acre or two acres is not a small number in a place. I don't think it would restrict the co-op from what they intend to do.
Well, let, let me mention the, uh, the isolated Hopkins at the end of Old Bridge Road. If we limit that to twenty-five percent, uh, we're limiting to, uh, maybe twenty thousand square feet. If we use the twenty-five percent on Longmilk Road, uh, let's see, there's some... We're limiting that to about eighty-five thousand square feet. And on the Cabral Farm Road, we're limiting that one up to over a hundred thousand square feet.
That's the nature of mathematics, isn't it? I understand, but I think what the objective is that on a small parcel, this becomes the problem. On a larger parcel, it's, it's going to be priced out from the, uh...
Well, and a larger parcel in this case exceeds what the state will allow.
Yeah, so there are other...
But the larger parcel might be in full view of a lot of people. The smaller parcel might be... I, I still figured, uh, we should be somewhat site-specific. If no one can see it, it doesn't make a difference.
Okay, um, if you have any minors that have just there, I'll ask Paul or Katie to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Um, additionally, these licenses are, have a limit.
Yeah.
Of the total canopy. So, you know, we're looking at different numbers here, a half, one and a half acres, two acres, five acres. But with the co-op having, say, five meters and combining all of their acreage, not sure I understand his, they may not be able to reach these limits based upon the limit of their license, being, say, a hundred thousand square feet. You know, individually, they may, they may get, you know, two or three hundred thousand square feet.
I think that... Jack, I think it might be not taken into account that a building, once it's there, may not be included in the canopy, but it might be a building. In other words, the canopy is the growing space, which is separate from usable working space. And we're trying to include all of the spaces as a concept here.
Okay.
I think that's, you know, and I appreciate that because the canopy can grow with the tier levels and we're not, you know, I don't want to step on that. I just, I just think that we're trying to protect the neighbors. We not inhibit the ability to go, to do this.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Katie a question?
Of course you can.
Katie, if this bylaw passed, as we just discussed, and someone, uh, wanted to exceed the twenty-five percent, they would go to the ZBA?
As of right now, that is a, that is a firm limitation, so it would require variance to exceed.
But they would go to the ZBA? So there is a possibility that the zoning board appeals can come in, and when? If they should grant it, they say, well, we don't, we don't see anything wrong with this, we'll, we'll allow you another ten thousand square feet. What happens to this special permit in the ZBA?
Well, you're not going to give a special permit if they don't meet the requirement, so they would have to get variance before they come for a special permit.
So they'd have to, so if we require that whenever they change canopy size or they change, uh, co-op member, uh, membership or whatever, or they're moving a location, if we require them for a special permit, they would have to go to the ZBA to get relief from the bylaw and then come to us for the, uh, special permit?
Well, I mean, it, it depends on, so you're giving a hypothetical in which, in which the bylaw imposes a specific requirement that they don't meet, and they want relief from that by way of variance.
That's correct.
The, the procedure for that is a variance comes before approval of a special permit. You cannot approve a special permit for a, a, the use that is, doesn't comply with the provision of, provisions of the bylaw.
Okay. Thank you.
Same criteria for ZBA? Anyway. Need the twenty-five percent, Jack? So that the twenty-five percent lot coverage, does that include what may be already existing? Yes, I believe that would include the existing structures. So they would... Do you agree with that?
Um, I mean, it would only include the existing structures insofar as they were being used for marijuana cultivation, right?
You make sure that's what they're talking about. I feel that we're talking about buildings. So if you already had a, say, five percent lot coverage, then you could only increase it up twenty percent to a total of twenty-five percent?
So, so as, yeah, so what I, I think we need to clarify that last sentence then.
Yes.
A total aggregate floor area of all enclosed buildings and structures, um, not including livable floor area, utilized, and they have this term eligible use, which we haven't really, that was part of some of their edits, that we haven't really adopted that term eligible use. So I would say utilized for a, um, RME or MTC permitted here under, shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the total lot area. Then your twenty-five percent doesn't include whatever your existing lot coverage is. It's twenty-five percent?
In addition.
In addition.
So is there a way we could encourage the use of the existing buildings on the lot? Or sometimes I guess? Do you need to take them out of the tomato business? So, sometimes I...
I, I think that's addressed later under additional provisions regarding cultivation at line nine and four. I remember paragraph number four, I should say, not line nine. It begins, it begins with point of your cultivation's proposed existing buildings, farms, greenhouses, and containers shall be reused whenever possible.
Where are those?
Right. Yeah, that's a beautiful... Oh, sorry. It's alright, that's... Yeah, I mean, you seem to have a lot of... One of the two that are necessary. It's the rest of the lot coverage.
Down to twenty-five percent, not exceed.
And that's strictly the cannabis part of...
Oh, sorry.
And not the twenty-five percent for number eleven is limited to the cannabis use only. And we do not address any structures other than that use.
Be used for other purposes.
Right, correct. So what does that do for lot coverage, as the board's opinion? I can, I can live with it, I just want to address the fact that we're not talking about anything else.
Right.
Then what is the, uh, control over the use that's growing? And I, I have no, I have no specific objection to it, but the twenty-five percent is already quite a large number of lot coverage.
Right, so conceivably, like you can have a, a lot that's two acres in size, it already has a house, and it already has a barn or a shed, and none of that is going to be used for this. Then you're looking at sort of that entire lot area, you're allowing twenty-five percent. So you're going to have a higher percentage of overall lot coverage.
Correct.
Than, um, than you might otherwise have, so this is...
That's all I'm...
Use-specific.
Use-specific to cannabis, and we're not looking at the other uses on the property. Are you comfortable with that? Just so that we know that we understand, there may be two greenhouses that are used for tomatoes, but we're looking at what's used for cannabis.
Well, the 25% is a large amount. Then I think it should include all buildings and accessory structures.
Not mentioning cannabis. To include cannabis and also any other buildings or accessory structures. Does that take us into a...
So, another way to address this would be to make that, that... It's not really, you don't want to say it's an as-of right up to 25%. Maybe you could say the board may permit up to 25%. And then, in the context of reviewing a site-specific location, you can have some discretion to go up to 25%, but you could also, if there's a lot of existing structures and a high lot coverage, perhaps impose a percentage less than that if you deem it appropriate for the site.
Do you satisfy that yourself, or that's just tell you?
I have one example. If we applied the same standard to the vineyard, we'd be asking them to pull up 45% of their lot. The vineyard doesn't grow in sealed structures. No, does not.
Yeah, I didn't see this lot coverage issue pertaining to open field cultivation.
I agree with Jack's suggestion, by the way. Include everything.
What, when you're thinking about the vines? You didn't just count the vines in that, right?
44% of the
You weren't... No, this is...
The property, vines.
But that's open space. That's growing outdoors, that's not a structure.
That is.
You'd have to eliminate that, take the structures themselves.
Oh, the structures themselves?
Yes, that's what we're talking about, not the actual... If you're going to grow cannabis outdoors,
Well, are we...
The screening would be part of the issue, but...
Are we including greenhouses?
We're talking about buildings and trying to include greenhouses in coverage of the lot so that we understand what can be placed on the property.
And Katie has proposed so...
Good point. So, I would just say... Okay, just reject those two that you put in really quick. Just in that last sentence.
Mr. Chairman, my basic problem here is that we have no leeway. And that we're asking someone with a farm to only grow on one out of every four square feet.
No, not... Not to grow, not everything is in a greenhouse, Paul.
Well, we're including greenhouse.
We're talking about building coverage. And I understand what you're saying, and you're right. So, we're going to look at it first after we craft this language and consider the best way to say this. Do you agree that we should look at the entire series of structures?
Permanent structures. How are we defining anything on the property?
Structures...
Permanent, mortable, temporary?
If...
So, Mr. Chairman, do we fall back, excuse me, do we fall back again to our definition of building, which is included in section 10?
I would, but does it eliminate greenhouses?
No, it does not.
Thank you. So, then, the answer would be it includes greenhouses. Does it eliminate movable containers?
Well, we can always add exceptions to whatever we want to...
We included structures, so... So, a definition of structure, do we include buildings and structures?
Yes.
Do you have a definition?
Our definition of building includes structures.
And I want to understand why there's a problem like that.
I live in a farming country. I mean, the only way a farmer can increase their income is to plant more seeds in the ground.
I'm limiting the ground use, I'm limiting the structure use.
That's correct. And in this particular instance, to get a cannabis crop, you're going to need to put it somewhere within a structure. If you leave it open and it gets pollinated, all of a sudden, you have a great seed crop, but nothing that people will buy.
Okay, Paul, I understand that. I'm trying to get wording that works. Are you intimating that we should strictly control the cannabis-growing structures and nothing else?
No, I'm saying that the board should have some leeway. When a special circumstances comes up, the board can make that decision. Or any future board can make that decision.
Well, the language is problematic because it's not bylaw in the first place, and that's the one way that language works. And what would you suggest to permit it to be greater coverage when it's already a special permit and a site plan review, and we wanted to at least provide some guidance in size?
You could say, what you propose, 25%. And the board has the discretion to make it larger if need be. So, we set a standard.
So, you take the word "shall" out? Is that what you say?
We give... Give the board the discretion to...
The way to do that is take the word "shall" out.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I do not think we should give any discretion to this board or any other. We should keep it as it is.
Okay, except we have to come up with language that works. In order to allow us to make that discretion, we can't have the word "shall" here.
So, do you have a determination on whether you're going to make a discretionary or not? I think, I mean, we can craft the language around whether or not this is a form cap or a discretionary recommendation.
I almost would prefer to spend two hours in a dentist's chair.
Well, the co-op proposed that the aggregate floor area of all enclosed buildings not exceed 25%. So, I said...
But they excluded, but they excluded greenhouses.
But in the very next session, they say greenhouses up to 50%. So, we're talking about a 75% coverage.
I don't think that's what they intended, but... Because that may be changed from someone else, a 50% greenhouse coverage. But maybe they took that into consideration, they wrote this 25%.
Mr. Chairman, shouldn't we vote as to whether to include of all structures?
Yes, of course, we can, actually, we can do this by consensus. Not everything has to be voted at this point because what we need to do is come up with a language that we agree on, and then we'll vote on it. And this is the specifics that we need to work on. We don't need to vote on it.
This is a very important issue.
I am not even, I'm not arguing that it's not important. I do think it's an important issue.
Well, and I think that the chairman's right. We should just try to work through this, knowing that some of these may be our placeholders, and then we'll go back through and vote on it.
Yeah, I don't think every line is voted. Not this one. Mr. Chairman, I'm aware of a difference between "shall" and "may." "Shall" indicates a duty to act, whereas "may" indicates discretion. Do we want to consider, in this case, whether "may" not exceed 25%?
I think there needs to be a consensus on whether or not to make this discretionary or not, and then we can craft language around what the board's consensus is. I think we're going to have the wordsmithness either way, but we need to know what the intention is, and then we can make the language match the intention.
I'll go with discretion.
I think there is discretion in this particular thing if we include all buildings, structures, and uses on property.
Discretion, good.
No, I don't understand.
I don't, I don't think we should give discretion. I think discretion absolutely can't.
That's enough. There is discretion for the board to decide on the coverage of the lot. Or "shall" and... No discretion. That's no discretion. I would allow discretion. Okay, so we're at the point where we not only all agreed, but a majority, we prefer discretion to be allowed.
So, I would keep the language as it is if that's the case. Total aggregate floor area, all enclosed buildings and structures. What is it with every second?
Oh, sorry.
I'm teaching again. But not including movable floor area utilized for RME or MMTC permitted under this bylaw, or here under, that's fine. Shall not exceed 25% of the total floor area unless the planning board determines that increased lot coverage would not have a detrimental impact in the neighborhood, or something like that. So, they have a standard under which to determine whether to exceed the 25%. Shall not exceed 25% unless there's a specific determination that an increase in lot coverage did not have a detrimental impact. Does that accomplish the board's intent?
It achieves it for me.
Yes.
And for all, and her. I don't think it satisfies Peter.
So, Mr. Chairman, we would be eliminating section 12?
At the moment, section 12 is eliminated. How about number 13? Can we move along?
Yeah, I did have a question, but I...
Sure, this would be a good time.
Yes. I'm not sure we have a fully addressed section 10.
Oh, you think we might miss something?
We did. Oh, yeah, no, I just put it as a note to possibly remove because we might have addressed it in the limitation section earlier, but I still have it in there for now because we didn't really decide. I just wanted to make sure that before we slip something. Okay.
I'm fine with the section 13.
I'm going to read it. The planning board may impose on all applicants reasonable fees for the employment of outside consultants to review applications submitted in accordance to this section of the bylaw and to assist with review of such plans and applications. The planning board may adopt administrative regulations governing site plan review and special permits, which shall be in addition to the requirements set out below.
From a legal perspective, I don't think this language is necessary to include. The planning board always has the authority to adopt reasonable regulations governing its processes. And those regulations can include a requirement for peer review. And you don't need to specify it in the bylaw in order to have that authority.
It is a legal rule that I'm reading.
Did you feel it was redundant, Karen?
I'm sorry.
Number 13, which was about fees and outside consultants, which we had in our bylaws already, so it is redundant.
Yes, that is already in a site plan review language, as I recall. So, I don't think it's necessary. Do you?
I don't think it's legally necessary to state it here.
Now, it's Peter. Do you prefer that it's here in redundancy?
I think it could be useful.
Okay.
I'm not going to argue about it.
I'm not actually asking for no argument. I'm just, I want to try to get some yeses and nos so you can actually proceed with it. But then, okay. I agree, it's there. Oh, I see. Did you open your number?
Sorry, I automatically did that because of the...
Sure.
It's not my fault. All right, we'll leave it for now. That's fine. If we go through some other things, do you want to revisit number 10? Was there something that we skipped over that you brought that up? That we didn't resolve nation? Or did we say we were going to come back to it anyway?
Well, if we determined it was redundant, we took it out, that's fine. I just saw that was still in there, and I missed the comment.
What, 10?
Do we want to take that down?
Right, the review, the characteristics are in our site plan review.
As long as we have the language incorporating those characteristics.
Yes. Yes, okay. No, we don't need to actually write the entire bylaws into this. They're there already. Just need to use my block. Application requirements. Does anyone need a break? Just asking.
Sure.
We're going to take five minutes. It's 12:30 something. We can read five. I'm so sorry, Jack. I didn't see you get it.